We're going to have to vote, shoot off and dare Donald to meet with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carter, Mazer, Schneider, Sova, Weaver, Wilson, Absinthe, Zimmer. Mazer?
Yes.
Schneider?
Yes.
Sova?
Yes.
Weaver? Wilson, Absinthe, Zimmer?
Yes.
Martyr.
Yes. All right, moving along, now agenda items from the sidelines. How it plays on the weeds.
Yeah, so.
Can you go in audio please, so we can see on camera?
So this will be my third time complaining about the weeds. We did the formal complaint, I complained last week, and then this week. They did get out and cut the weeds on the west side and where the condos will be. Still the property behind us, they did nothing to. There's still a pile of stuff out there, the weeds are still high. The house is being worked on every day, pretty much. That's on the property. And then the one ditch that would run diagonal through the large property, I spoke about it, had the cattails in it. That obviously didn't get trimmed because the boy on the tractor couldn't do that with a tractor, but. So it was just standing wa- it's just standing water. My husband went and pulled the giant garbage, was it a tarp, a tarp or something out of there a couple of days ago, just because that was still sitting there too. So I don't know when they're ever going to take care of the weeds. Are they waiting till that house is finished before they do it to clear off the land?
Is that on the vacant lot that's left?
No, no, with the vacant lot, they did clear, but the one that they got the house on, it's on Bell River. They're just finishing the house on it, they're putting siding in the roof on today.
Oh, second from the.
Oh, they'll probably be dragging that all off pretty soon, right?
I mean, I would imagine, but it's been, I mean, it's been months where it's just obviously grown out.
It's a construction site, so it's just a little thing we've got to sort of, but I don't know what to say.
I know they gave it a cover, we were saying, or you're talking about a ditch line.
Well, no, I'm talking about the entire property behind it too is not covered. I got the date of mine. But the entire property runs to our backyard and the weeds are the signs of the pile of garbage back there of metals, because they scraped up the fence, the grape, the grapevine fence, they scraped that when they were clearing the property originally into a giant heaping pile, which now has high weeds growing out of it, and still the property is still covered in weeds. That's more of my concern, I guess, at this point.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Mr. Fields.
Jim Fields, 80263 Bell River Road. Hi, we're saying like, we just did this last week, so here we are again. Just quickly to go through, no responses from the city regarding active violations of codes submitted formally multiple times. This is an ongoing issue that shows little to no action or communication from the city. Thank you for the clerk staff on my freedom of information requests. They're filling things, so I appreciate Donna and Amber's work on that. As far as major's request for my comments on statewide attorney's false claims, that is in process. It's being reviewed before I release it black and white. As soon as I have the okay from my team, I will release that to all the city council. We want to make sure that we're 100% accurate before I put it in writing. Multiple procedural violations formally submitted to the city, again, no response on that. The recent subject of the library purchase from 7/23/24 meeting, which is where we are tonight. So at the last meeting, we were told that Martyr, Wilson, Sova, Donna, Bart, maybe Francis, an attorney, worked out a proposed real estate transaction and brought it to the meeting, ready to sign. That was kind of hard to watch, knowing what I do for a living, especially when the realtor was also at the meeting. There is actually a reference during the realtor's statements where the group was aware that they did not have to, they needed to avoid having a quorum off-site, which would have implied that they were in violation of the Open Meeting Act. I was literally chomping at the feet when I, when I hear these things. This is a verbatim quote from somebody that has a better licensing than I do, and it's in parentheses. "The Open Meeting Act does not apply to committees and subcommittees composed of less than a quorum of the full public body if they are merely advisory or only capable of making recommendations concerning the exercise of governmental authority." End quote. Where, on the other hand, a committee or subcommittee is empowered to act on matters in such a fashion as to deprive the full public body of the opportunity to consider a matter, a decision of the committee or subcommittee is an exercise of governmental authority which effectuates public policy, and the committee or subcommittee proceedings are therefore subject to the Open Meetings Act. This is 43 Schmidke versus Claire, School Board 228, Michigan appellate 259, 269, 231. If the committee is effectively authorized to determine whether items will or will not be referred for action by the full board citing Attorney General opinion 1977 to 1978 there. From my attorneys, they wish me to pass this along to the City of Memphis City Council. Quote, "They need to understand a decision made by a group or committee of less than a quorum, even if approved by a quorum of the council, cannot be accomplished in a non-public meeting. Even committees of less than a quorum must be in a public meeting if their business includes decision-making that would typically purview the council specifically of financial and personal matters. This is paramount to understand. The Open Meetings Act specifically does not allow members to initiate individual or small group private discussions among themselves to predetermine the outcome of a public vote or decision. To be legally clear, because this was associated in the purchase of real property, they could have legally done this as some type of closed session, which would have required all, if the public notices, to have been issued accordingly for the open meeting. This is required to enter into a closed session, which is something we know there's a struggle with. Even if you would have gone into a closed session, there must have entered through a close portion form of a convened public meeting. The committees are of an advisory nature, the committees will not deliberate a common topic. These are all things that associate with the Open Meetings Act. Because the contract was presented before the board or the council by a group that was not just an advisory committee, it could be an OMA. And now we're just going by review of what was said on tape at the meeting last week. This is our quick synopsis of it. I'm bringing this to your attention because this is a red flag to I saw and my team saw, because we're looking into other things and the city needs to be aware of. The other key point they noticed is the potential conflict of interest and possible ethic issues are apparent to some of them. It seems that a council member and a realtor are both employed at the same address by the same company, which is KW Williams. They state, "This not only looks bad, it is bad and illegal liability for the city. I would urge member Sova to acknowledge this and recuse himself from voting due to the conflict of interest that possibly exists." They go into the section of the charter of section 515 slash D. Now disqualified members, a member of a public body who's disqualified due to a conflict of interest may not be counted to establish a quorum to consider a matter. These are all things that we see on tape. I take notes at the meetings, and like I said, I'm a stick in the mud, and I'm going to be a pain in your butt, but I'm a black and white guy. And if I see this stuff and I talk about it with my team and they raise their hands, where there's smoke, there's some kind of fire. Now whether some of this you can arbitrate or not, some of it you can't, and you have to take into consideration this. As far as the property transaction of real estate, I get it, the city needs space, none of that. But to get from point A to point B is where there are pitfalls and there's opportunities that could allow a legal challenge. The OMA is not something to mess with. Ethical violations or conflict of interest are also not something to mess with, because when they get in totality, it can be an issue I don't think anybody wants to approach, because it can retroactively affect a lot of things and there's a lot of collateral damage in doing so. So I would urge the council, and I would urge everybody to be honest and look at where they're at with things, see any of these legal pitfalls, juxtapose where you're at, so that way you can do this cleanly. Because I don't want to, you know, yeah, I can be a storm cloud, but again, I'm a taxpayer here. Last thing I want to do is have the city have an issue for something that the city does that you can raise your hand and bring to your attention, so there's not a proceeding. Again, we can go back to what happened right up around Main Street between property and joyology, if you go north further, so. All things to consider. Again, if there's any questions or whatever, at any time, anybody can reach out to me now. Free to help or any of that, so. It's something to really consider right now, because it's a matter of public record and it's on tape and it's being viewed and it's being reviewed.
I guess I should address, I'm not employed, I'm self-employed, but I wouldn't, I don't care if I recuse myself and not vote, abstain from voting, but I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, I mean, that's the, that's.
This is, this is, this is why we brought Mr. Rosso on, so that Jason didn't have to handle this.
Right, at first they were asking me to do it, and I'm like, absolutely, I cannot, so I'm going to go to somebody that I know has, that I trust with experience and say, you know, this is one of the people that I trust the most, and you willing to do it? Can you get us into a shelving? And that was, that's where we started, so.
I can appreciate that.
But I have no problem sitting out of the vote.
But you understand, we're, we're comfortable.
Yeah, I mean, I don't work for him, we don't, it's, I'm, I'm, I'm a contractor, but I'm self-employed.
Yeah, but you're still listed on an umbrella company.
Hey, I understand, I mean, so in the future, if I, if I were to work at, I don't know, General Motors and Bart wanted to need a new GM truck for the DPW, would I sit out of that one too?
If you have no financial interest.
I have no financial interest in this, so.
You can't sit out on the vote.
I can't sit out on the vote?
It's right there in our charter.
Okay, I can't sit out of the vote, because I have no financial interest.
He has no financial interest, only if it's financial interest to him.
Okay, so, I'm going to kind of.
I'm just putting things out.
Yeah, I have no financial interest in this, I'm not gaining anything, not a penny. There's nothing in it for me personally. This is all done at request of the city staff who needed more space, so.
I get all that, you know, I'm just saying it doesn't look, like I said, it doesn't look, it gives appearance of.
It's, I know, but he's just saying he's everybody's conspiracy mind and thinks that there's something on that thing, so. It's, it is what it is, but, yeah, I have no financial gain or interest or anything other than they asked, they wanted more space and to look into this. Since I do have a real estate background, Kurt said, hey, Jason, will you take care of this? And so we figured, do it, get a few people in, look at it, if you want to move forward, take it to council and see if they want to move forward. Last move was, we tabled it, so the people who didn't get to see it, got to see it, here we are now, so we're basically as if last week didn't happen in that regard, we didn't make any decisions, so.
I appreciate that.
But, yeah, I, so I can't sit out of the vote.
And, and just so everybody was aware, that even if he did abstain from it, since he has no financial gain on it, he could be fined or kicked off his seat.
Sure.
So, if I don't do it just for the sake of doing it.
Yeah, it, it, I mean, like I said, it'd be easy for me, but I can get in trouble for not voting. It'd be a duty here.
We went over this stuff, so just to, just to answer, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying it's there. I'm saying that the appearance of it's there because.
Appearance, for appearance.
When we reviewed the meeting and what led to the development contract as a red flag.
What do I, I'm going to talk to the camera, talk to the camera.
So they wanted to just make sure.
Thank you, Mr. Fields. Team of nature.
Before we move on, can I ask a question? So who all went to the, to the building and looked at?
First, I, I.
So who, who went, just tell me.
Bart. It was me and Larry. Kurt showed up because he got out of work early enough to make it. So it was going to just be me, Larry, Bart, and Mel, and then Kurt was able to make it, so Kurt showed up.
So three people went, but the mayor's not on.
And the realtor.
Yeah, I don't care about that. The mayor's not on any committees, okay, so he's not part of any committee on this thing. So the only two people that were there were Jason and Larry, and I believe they're both on the finance committee, and two people I'm pretty sure is not a quorum. So I'm not sure where you think you're going with this, but I think you're wrong as far as people talking about a possibility that could happen in the future. All we were looking to do was lock up the building so we could have 30 days to inspect it and look at, at what's going to happen there and make our decision. That's all we're trying to do. So we weren't trying to purchase the building, we're just trying to lock it up for 30 days.
We're not spending any money, we're not doing anything.
And that's not a question, that's a statement. Sorry, go ahead.
No, that's fine, and at the same time, it's, we were not part of drawing up the purchase agreement. We had Mr. Rosso do that under advisement of council with stipulation that full council, or that there's a vote on it, and then it passes by a quorum, so.
Thank you for the transparency.
Okay, Tina?
Good evening again. So, I live at 80461 Bell River in Memphis. So, I want to say ditto to Jim, I want to say thank you to Steve for all the hard work. He went way above and beyond in getting the grass cut.
Yeah.
But I also do want to bring one point that Jim started to bring about, but I want to say this, and it's nothing against, but it does look really bad. I'm a nurse, but, none of you know it, but I work in the legal realm. And I do think that he, Jason, should have presented upfront that per his real estate license, a real estate person has to be connected to a broker. Who is your broker, Jason?
Phil's the broker.
Okay, so your license depends upon Mr. Rosso.
We have an agreement, but I can go with any broker.
I agree with that, but currently today and last week when we were here, who did your license depend upon?
This is a question, does he have a statement today? Go ahead, we're not going to turn this into an argument.
So, I just want to, it's not an argument, it's a thing.
Here's the thing, and she just made it clear, I, since I have no financial gain or personal gain from this, I cannot sit out of the vote. Even if I wanted to, I could get in trouble for sitting out.
I have nothing against, I'm just making a point.
Yeah, I, KW Platinum, he said where he was from, I'm from KW Platinum, there's what, 400 people with that office? And as far as being associated with anyone, I'm associated with just every realtor in Southeast Michigan. I either belong to the same board as them, the same MLS as them, the NAR, you know.
I understand, I'm just saying specifically.
I'm connected with every realtor.
Okay.
The mayor doesn't want you to continue, thank you. I personally, at the last meeting, was offended for the city council at that end of the table. They weren't even aware that you were going there.
Oh. Go ahead.
I, I, they were offended, and they made it clear that they were offended, and I just want to stand up for them and let them know that I stand for them, because not only are they citizens, they sit on the board and should be aware of anything that any of you are doing.
There was a series of text messages that went through, and everyone was aware.
I had verbal conversations with everybody to advise them of what was going on, that we wanted to move forward with this purchase agreement, so.
They were all on the same text, so.
Yeah, so, I mean, there, there was a conversation that happened. Unfortunately, it seemed like that maybe they forgot the conversation that we had, but anyways.
I'm going to be real honest with you, you're not reading your room. That fool under the table is rolling their eyes at you. I'm just going to make it transparent.
You guys didn't get the text messages when we started talking about this?
We're having an open conversation. I feel like we're filed about this.
No, 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 let's stop.
I, I just want to.
I will address this later, but let's all, we do things in order, one at a time.
So, I'm just reading the room, and I'm very good at it, and I just wish that you guys could open your eyes. And for the community, I would hope that people that are sitting on the board would be better to read a room than what's happening here. If we cannot be, if you cannot be open and transparent with each other, you sure in the heck are not being transparent with us. I'm not here for or against buying the funeral home. I believe a woman has to, or a man has to climb a ladder straight in the air for safety's sake. We need to do something about that. I'm very safety focused, and everybody in this room knows it. So my concerns are, do we buy that home? Do we add on to a building that we already have? I've heard a lot of you speak of being more like towns around us. Do we formulate one of our buildings or add on to it and make a public safety building? I'd just like to offer some suggestions. I'm not always here to bitch and complain, but I'll be the first one that will stand up for somebody that has been locked out, because I think that's wrong. We need to stand together as a community and not just as a board. Everyone in this room pays taxes, and we need to stand together and fight for each other. And Mr. Fields brings a lot of laws here, and, and I was, but I'm just going to break it down. Some things are having sense. Safety, the sense of belonging, and that we are a community. But, but that's not how not only this side of the sidelines is feeling. I'm sure you don't feel like you belong to a community when people are like saying, don't, let's not make a bigger place. If you need a bigger place, you need a bigger place, but let's talk about it. Let's not just come to a meeting and say, time to vote. None of us are doing that with our presidential election in November, I would hope not at least. And I don't care which side you stand on, but I hope you put some forethought into what you're voting for and who you're voting for. And everybody in this room matters.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Henry?
Thank you, Mr. Henry. Evening. I spoke with Mr. Sova, and I think he has no bias, I think he's being forthright. So, if there was lack of communication, I'm sure it was an oversight. But I came to talk about the funeral home. That sits into our plan for the city, and I for one think it would be very wise to buy that right now. We've had good luck with our new buildings, and that's helping the city out. We do have a safety issue with the city hall facilities, I know that, they got an oxus stack that were, no, we should have to look at those conditions. And that funeral home would be ideal, and even if you did it in steps, you know, I know there's some things that need to be done to it, but it's not, it'd be easier to buy that building and convert it than it would be to add on to a building and go through all that type of planning and expense and overruns. I've been in construction for 40 years, so I know what I'm talking about. But that building be renovated, be ideal. So I think it'd be a really good idea to strike while the iron is hot. You know, if you can't buy it, because price I heard that it's going for, you can't buy a building like that right now. So, it'd be a good idea to do it. That's all I want to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving right on to the purchasing area. I tell you what, I'm going to take a moment to go around each of our council members and hear their thoughts and their opinions are. Start with you, Mr. Sova, if you have anything else you'd like to add.
So, this was brought to us today, and I'm going to take a second to review. This is just a seller's disclosure. It's, it's part of the documents that we have. We, we could do it during our due diligence period after the fact, or we just, so you have them here to review. If everything looks good, it, it just goes in with the purchasing deal. And it just is, they didn't really put all that much on there, it's just what they have, what's at the building, what works, what doesn't work, what, what problems they had. There's not a lot on there because honestly, the seller hasn't owned it very long, so there's probably a lot he doesn't know about the building, so. Besides that, yeah, I, I have nothing to gain. As far, as far as nobody heard that we were doing this, there's a text message that was sent out about the interest in this thing, and as far as I know, everybody at the table replied positively, except for Larry Wilson, who doesn't really do text messages. So to say that nobody knew anything about this, I, I really don't know, because I still had the messages saved, so. Everyone responded, so. There was nothing nefarious going on, nobody was trying to hide anything from anyone. Once we had PA together, everyone can review, we tabled that, everyone had their chance to walk through the building. So we're past that point. So here we are today to vote on this purchasing matter. Pretty much the business of the day.
Thoughts, Mr. Weaver?
Yes, I do have a few. Independently, on my own initiative, I think anybody who was here a week ago knew that I objected immediately to having a purchase agreement put in front of me to sign when the vote out. The reason that I did, is when I came on council, I did get this vote on the Open Meetings Act. Let me back up for just one second. This won't take me long to do, but I would like, Donna, if you would, contact the enforcement code officer and have him check with my neighbor, and have him look at the situation he described for two weeks in a row now, and see if it is something that can be remedied. He's a very reasonable guy, if it's grading that needs to be done or whatever, that's fine. But we need to bring him in here, that's what we pay this man for, so that he'll come over there and talk to you folks and take a look at this. I don't want a pile of garbage sitting in my backyard, I don't know what it is. There was a few things that were just gnawing at me when we, when that was first put forward last week. So I went back, and I spent a lot of hours reviewing this document. And I went online and made sure that I got the latest document for the Open Meeting Act and reviewed that. And I wanted to be sure that the process and the procedures were correct. That's what's, that's, that's the core that drives me. I don't want the city getting into territory where we're opening ourselves up to legal liability. Open Meetings Act is PA 267, and everybody wants to take a look at it. So let me make the points here, because I have, I have some slight disagreements with what's been said that's so far concerning the Open Meetings Act and the way that this was brought about. And I say these things to put us on notice, and hopefully we will, we will learn from this. So far, so good. We haven't done anything that we're going to get in trouble for right now. The purpose of that meeting was to consider the feasibility of purchasing your old funeral home as a new city hall. And I am absolutely have no problem with the mayor sending out an email. There is nothing wrong with that to poll members, if it is just discussion. And that is what I took it for. Now, I may not have focused in on the point of you were actually going to craft a document and put a purchase agreement together. But in the Open Meetings Act, if you want to read that, that would be considered, if we were actually doing that, as an around the horn thing, like calling up individual members and trying to manipulate the outcome of the vote. Informationally, that's fine, and so that's why I agreed to that mass email that went out. We were asked to keep it confidential, I had no issue with that meeting. If that made perfect sense to me, we're trying to go into a real estate deal here. Now, I'm open to entertaining any ideas for business in the city, any policies we want to consider. But it was apparent immediately to me when we started that meeting last week that a purchase agreement with a date of execution had been drawn up. The amount of earnest money was agreed upon, the expectation of a vote was out there. Others and I on this council had no input on that decision. I felt that was entirely improper, and that was incorrect behavior. I had agreed to explore the idea with the rest of the council via the email, which I did.
Yeah, that was a text message, not an email.
Whatever it was, I, whatever, I got it electronically. I didn't expect a decision resulting in a proposed purchase agreement being executed over the vote. I had a special meeting, that I did not expect. I had a special meeting. That I did not expect. And as I said, anybody would tend to me know that I was not gonna support that and I thought that was an error. As I made it clear last Friday, I wasn't gonna support that till I at least had an opportunity to view the building for myself. I had no knowledge of who prepared the agreement. I didn't even know the purchase agreement that were looking in front of us even had dates on it for execution. So clearly, decisions were made. I spent a lot of hours looking this over. Let me tell you what I found very briefly. "All," it says in this act, and I stress that word, "all." Decisions must be made at a meeting open to the public. Decision defined in this act means an action, a vote, recommendation, and several other terms, but those will do for this conversation. I don't wish a vote by the members of a public body is required and the same has to take place in an open meeting to the public. Clearly, this action to draw up a purchase agreement, choose a realtor, bypass the ability of some of us on the council to have input and give our recommendations to be considered. Again, I'm not against candidacy in the body. That's fine. There's no problem with that whatsoever. I mean, even the point of having the attorney review it and all that, it's just another thing. Decisions are being made here. Confidentiality issue. We have an advisory committee as government bodies do. The advisory committee is not subject to the Open Meetings Act because the advisory committee, this is where this should have gone, I believe, and I'm on it. Pardon me? And when I... My very first meeting for council in December of '22, I had no idea where the advisory committee is. I asked. They never told me. It's all these other issues that come up that we need to look into. So the advisory committee, really, the people that compose of it, the three members on this council, we would have gotten together, we would have done some due diligence, we would not be making decisions. Then we would bring that information back to the full council. That's the way that should have really gone. And our role as advisory committees is just simply to make recommendations. I too am not at all opposed to looking at this building for the city office. And I'll weigh in on that when the proper appropriate time comes. But the need remains, if the need remained, to keep this confidential. Also, even after we come back from the advisory committee, the next thing we do is we gotta have an open meeting and then we go into closed session. Again, where this is discussed and then we will bring it back into open session and that's where the decisions are made. So there's no problem about keeping confidential. I just don't want anybody confused thinking that we did this because we need to keep confidentiality under wraps and protect buyer seller, our position as a city. But all decisions need to be made in open session at these council meetings. And if people will take the time to read this, you'll see that I think I, you know, I didn't consult an attorney on it. I mean, I'm... I can't wait through all the league leaves, but it's pretty plain to me. And one of the very specific points it makes on reasons to call a closed session is to consider real estate purchases. There's four or five bullet points in there to consider real estate purchase or leases, where you can go into a closed session with an advisory or have the advisory committee go in, meet, bring back their information, and if there's still questions with the whole council that we've given you the information, we would be saying, well, let's get a realtor involved. We would want to get our attorney to look at it. What about prices? What about contingency? So I want to be very clear about why I was a little uneasy with that pact. And I'm not here to beat anybody up. I'm not saying anybody was doing it nefariously or trying to act improperly. However, black letter law doesn't care about your feelings. So I just want to make that clear and that's all I have to say on that subject at this point.
If I can just comment here, no decision was made because...
Yes, there was. We had a purchase agreement to sign. Now, you hold on. I had the floor.
I let you talk.
All right, you go ahead.
I kind of disagree with you. The only decision that was made was let's call a realtor to let us in the building.
You had a certain purchase agreement you were forced to sign.
For us to review and if you wanted changes, you could have made changes. This was for review. This is not written in stone. It's not signed. This isn't a binding agreement. This was given to you to review. If there was a line in there that you didn't like, you would bring it up at the meeting and say,
Who chose the realtor?
Hold on. He told me to call somebody. He told me to get him in. Okay. We haven't paid him anything. You want to hire another realtor?
I'm just making...
Is that what you want?
We're making decisions without consulting the entire council.
Okay, I'll continue though. No decisions were actually made. Maybe you're right because I'm not aware of how advisory... Advisory should have been probably the one to do it.
No, I'm not.
But I was just asked. He told me to look into it. He said, you know, hey, this is what we're interested in. I got the email like everybody else. We may be interested in this funeral home. I said, okay, so what do you want me to do? He said, well, can you handle it? I said, no, I can't handle it. I called him. I called a trusted, someone I know who has experience in commercial real estate, residential real estate, lots of years, well-respected in the industry. I called him and said, hey, can you handle this for us? We're not bound to him to anything right now. We don't owe him anything. This is all for review. This is... We are here right now. This discussion that you think should be had, we're having it right here. So if you want to talk instead of talking about that, you want to talk about the purchase agreement? Do you want to talk and discuss about the terms in here that you don't like or do like or think should be changed? Because that's what we're here to do. This is not signed by anyone. So a decision has been made until it's signed. Right now, this is a draft. It's a working draft. If you want something changed, propose it. We vote on it. Make a change. Move on. That's what this means about is getting this to something that could be agreed on by everybody. This isn't written in stone. The earnest money deposit, do you want it to be more or less? Bring it up. It can be. Standard put in there, 1% because it's basically standard what most people do. It can be changed. Everything can be discussed. This isn't, here, sign it. Even last week...
That's pretty much the way I thought last week it was.
Not even about what you felt, but we were here to discuss this, not to sign this. To discuss this and see if we wanted to sign it. So...
Would you buy it though, if I don't see?
No, I wouldn't.
Oh, you wouldn't?
No.
Thank you.
And nobody's asking you to.
If you made the decision to do that, I'd have the opportunity to have the thing.
Nobody's asking you to.
Yes, you more or less.
This isn't... This doesn't mean you're buying something. This means you're making an offer. Then you have due diligence.
How can you make an offer if I don't know that, Jason? My point is...
Now, you have, right?
It's the appearance of the impropriety that bothers you.
You logged through it, right?
Last funeral, 270, I was...
We tabled it. You had your opportunity to... Now, it's not signed, I see. We tabled it.
I planned that I did take the opportunity to inform my objection.
So ahead, and we tabled it. So you could have your opportunity. Now, we're here to discuss the terms of this thing and whether you want to change any of them or not. So that's it. It's not about the procedures.
Steve, I'm gonna turn it back over to you and see...
This is what's on the agenda.
I made my point, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I know you made your point on the open meetings. I don't know if there's anything you want to talk about...
About this?
About the purchase agreement.
Was there terms in here that you don't like or want changed?
You had some time to review it. I know you got it. You know, last week you got it, probably just a day before the meeting.
Like three hours before the meeting.
Okay, I don't know how that happened. I got mine the day before, but regardless.
Yeah, one thing comes to mind.
I got it and I sent it to Donna and she put it in the back.
Yes, one thing that does come to mind, there's 60 bed frames in there. If we were moving to have this, I want all that cleared out of there.
This is gonna be...
Due diligence.
That's gonna be due diligence on the owner and clearing stuff out that doesn't, we don't want there.
We'll bring it up.
Yeah, that's part of the due diligence.
That's being done.
There's a whole lot inside there that needs to be cleared out.
For sure. And if my understanding is correct, and you all were correct, and Jason included, we can back out of this at any time if we decide to go ahead and explore this under this purchase agreement that you have put here today. And we also have the opportunity to extend the purchase agreement.
You have the opportunity to request. The seller may deny that request and say, no, I don't want to give you an extension.
We have 30 days to back out of this after we sign it.
After, not after we sign it, after the seller accepts our offer. We don't even know he's gonna accept it. He's got other people up there.
I'm not worried about that at this point. I'm worried about doing the process correctly.
Right, so the thing is...
I don't want to do it in the end or keeping people in the dark.
I thought everybody was...
I'm being raised in the dark. So Steve, do you have anything else? No, nothing I want to...
So this looks good to you? This purchase agreement looks good to you right now?
Mr. Wilson, you did mention last week, if I'm not mistaken, that earnest money would be refunded if we decided to back out. Is that correct?
Yes, we've written it. As long as we give them... Once they sign an agree, you have 30-day due diligence. During that time, for any reason, you decide not to go forward, we just give them a notification before the 30 days they were up. And earnest money is held actually in a third party, either us or the title company, both of the...
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that again to make sure I understood.
Yes, you're correct.
But is it 30 days, I'm gonna ask, and the...
The 30 days.
Should be on the 29th day or 28th?
Well, you know, whatever day you decide you don't. You have 30.
All right, so we got 30 days.
From the day that...
You go along with the discussion. I mean, if you're gonna bring it up for vote, I'm gonna vote on it one way or another. I understand completely what's going on in there, so...
It's 30 days from the time that the seller accepts the offer, if he does.
Yes.
It's not from the day we sign this. It's from the day he accepts it, if he accepts it. If he doesn't accept it, we're doing nothing here.
So what...
If he does, we go due diligence.
So Jason's right. So what would happen is we... Once you guys agree and we send it to them, they sign it. Once they sign it, if they sign it as written, the clock stops, stops in 30 days. If they do not and they make a counter, they say, I don't like this, I don't like that, they change our purchase agreement. Instead, it will be 30 days when you agree to their terms. But there's always gonna be 30 days once we have a meeting of minds. Do you do your inspections, do you do diligence, get contractors in there, see what the costs are gonna be, make sure it's gonna work out feasible for you? And then if you decide at that point, you want to go forward, yes, no problem. If you decide not to go forward, we send them a dissatisfaction report and they say during a few doses, we do not wish to go forward. You don't have to disclose to them why.
So we should have at least 30 days to nail down quotes.
Correct.
Have things inspected.
30 days for what they agree.
So on.
Right.
They may or may not agree. Number that are involved. Because right now, alls we have is a ballpark. All we have was like a hundred and $10,000, I think, over the phone quotes. And I'm not gonna go off of that, you know. We're talking about spending over $4 million. I want to make sure that I know what it would cost.
Wait, 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 wait. $4 million?
Quarter.
No, I thought you said $4 million.
Okay, no. No, actually, it'd be like $310,000 according to...
Right, right.
The figures that have been seen, so... Yeah, I had my say, Mr. Mayor. It's fine with the smoother arm.
Okay. Robbie?
Steve pretty much nailed it. Yes, we were checked last week. I'm sure it was pretty obvious. I want to look for the tests other than how is the funeral home selling? And it sounds like a good idea to me. To me, that doesn't justify... And I felt pretty pressured that let's get this signed tonight and get going. We sent it to Francis already too. That all costs, you know, that costs money too. And I think it should have been, we should have all been bought. Should have been more transparent. If it's that big of a hurry, maybe it's not to be.
In hindsight, I could have reached out. You're right.
Yeah, no.
It wasn't like I was trying to hide anything. I was just trying to move it along because there's all the options.
I mean, I wonder because I think you guys know.
You mean, anytime Mr. Weaver ran advisory, you could have asked for it to go to advisory?
We didn't know. How did we know? We didn't know if you guys were even moving forward.
I'm not a professional politician either.
Neither am I.
You know, when the things come up, I got a plan as I see them, call balls and strikes when I see them. So, you know, I'm just a little... My spidey sense is going off. If I had have been on the top of my game and I'd spent my life in full time in politics or leading work, yeah, I would have said, fall the fall time out, let's call them, beating them, mind. I had to sit down there and spend hours reading through the Open Meetings Act to find out all that stuff and remind myself.
I told you guys about it.
I apologize for not knowing that.
And I told you at the party committee meeting. That's really...
Anything else, Robby?
Before it was even really drafted, so...
No, I guess I don't. And I do think it's a great idea. I just sound like being not involved in it.
Okay. Mr. David?
So I think there's two sides to this, right? The building, I think we're all in agreeance, right? I don't think purchasing the building, for me, purchasing the building is not the problem, right? My concern lies in the costs that it will take to get it up to par for what we need, what the long term will be, what the upstairs will turn into in terms of costs. Those are my concerns and I have questions about that. Like who leads the process to generate quotes? Who... Do we get to review them? Do we have another special meeting before we move forward with quotes? All those things. I have questions about those. But none of that can happen without the purchase agreement and I understand that. That's fine. My major issue lies in the process, the same as Steve's and Robbie's. We literally, I mean, it's pretty clear we are operating under a microscope right now. There are people who have teams reviewing literally every single word we speak. Every single meeting we hold is being reviewed. And any indication of impropriety is gonna be reviewed under a microscope. And this is one of those situations. One of the things I learned, I understand, I'm not the oldest. I get that. However, optics can never be changed. You can't change the optics of situations. What they think the situation is, it doesn't matter what you guys say. It looks bad. And referring to this text message conversation, I just looked through my phone. I don't have a text message chain. I recall getting one phone call when I was on vacation in Muskegon about the funeral home and I'm like, yeah, it sounds like a great idea. Let's talk about it. Last week, we get a purchase agreement. We can say whatever we want, that it was for review. That's not how it was presented. It wasn't... We'll just respectfully disagree with you. It was not presented that way. So I just would like to caution us. I think there are people who are saying they're not trying to do damage, but ultimately, that's what will happen. It's like taking a kid to a candy store and telling them not to eat candy. They're gonna eat candy, right? Like, we have to be better about how we do things. We have to communicate better. And out of all of this, I hope that's what comes because I do want what's best for the city. Whether people believe that or not, I do. I do want to be financially responsible. Donna, I know we need more space, right? I absolutely believe that. But we didn't come from a phone call when I was on vacation to a purchase agreement. A thousand conversations happened. And to not acknowledge that is just wrong, especially with the climate that we're under right now. So that's all I have to say about that.
Mr. Schmayer?
So when you say purchase agreement, it sounds like you're actually committing to buy something. All we're doing is committing to have it locked up for at least 30 days so we can look at it.
Totally understand that.
I know you do. I know you do. I'm just talking to the people who have teams that are scrutinizing what we're trying to do. So I don't remember when this was first brought up, but I'm pretty sure that came out of the city office that this was available. And I may have been the first one to hear it, actually. I was probably the fir... No, I wasn't?
He was.
Okay. Because I'm working in the office for elections at this time. But it wasn't, that was like three weeks ago? It wasn't that long, right?
Can I say something?
No, I'm just saying, let me finish. This was like three weeks ago, right? This all started...
Yeah, this might pass, yeah.
Yeah, so... And I realize it is fast, but the thought was the fact that we wanted to lock this building up and give ourselves a chance to look at it before it goes away because once it's gone, it's gone. And I think you guys all agree that this is a perfect opportunity for what we need. It's gonna take some work. It's gonna take some time. And that's all I have to say about that. I'm not sure, when someone says like, I can see what's going on here, I'm not sure exactly what that means. But I have a question about page 16 of the agreement. So right at the top, under seller's acceptance, there's already a line filled in that says, seller's acceptance agreement this blank, blank, blank day of the whatever with the following conditions. The offer is to open until July 26 at 1:00 p.m. I assume that was just left in by mistake, right?
That'll be added.
So we strike that line right out.
I'm gonna strike that line right out.
Let's start with that. Let's start with that.
And, and that.
The offer is open until July 26 at 1:00 P.M. We're going to change, get rid of that, we're going to change, right? So, I see you have land contract, Hervidge, in here. We would have to select one of these boxes before that even became the thing, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that, that's clear. If we did decide to mortgage this building, can we get an idea of what the mortgage rates would be for the city for a commercial building to purchase it?
You'd have to check your rating and different bakers out there. It's probably going to be in the 7% range.
Okay. Ms. Ollie?
Oh, I, I think it's a great idea. I think it's an opportunity to have a building that's on Main Street. It's huge. It's got a lot of floor space. It's got tubular room. And I don't tell you no wrong. It's got tons of storage. I don't think adding onto this building or any of the other buildings is going to be as fruitful as. It would probably cost you, this building is actually going to cost a purchase to add on something here and I'm sure you would lose a bunch of parking lot space in the back, which a lot of people seem to use, so. Ms. Ollie?
Due diligence. So, no, right, okay. I was looking at the due diligence environmental. Now, our due diligence for 30 days covers us for 30 days, whether it's environmental or anything else. I was just looking at line 7B. It says, this is all about like phase one and phase two. This, this doesn't really pertain. Oh, I'm on page five. Under seven, under environmental. I don't really think that this even pertains to us at all, right?
Correct. So, it could. It's your choice. So this purchase agreement is a commercial purchase agreement. I use all buildings. It has, you build as deep or short as you want in the environmental. If you were going to a location and you had no clue on what had been there and you were concerned that there could be underground storage units of oil or contaminants, you would do a phase one or a phase two. Now, we know that's been a funeral home for, I think, my whole life and I'm older than most of you guys. So I, I'm pretty sure nobody's going to know what was there before. So because of that, and where it's located, there's probably not an environmental concern you would be in there. But I want to leave you every opportunity if you wanted to do it. You know, I, I'm not trying to limit anything. So we, there's a purchase agreement we use that covers everything you're going to want to do and then some. So if somebody comes out, for example, says, well, you know, I think I remember them building, carrying a body in the back, you want to dig up the backyard, you're welcome to because it says you have the right to do it. So we're just trying to protect your interest in it to make sure that you have extra abilities to do things than limiting them. I hope that makes sense.
And I, just I guess a quick question. Have we, you have ordered any title work on this?
No.
Property, yeah, okay. And the title work?
Title surveys. So, and really to go back.
Well, I hope not, because that involves money.
No, it doesn't.
They don't do title searches for free.
Right. Yeah, you don't pay your title company until you close.
Yeah. You're right.
You might not pay them, but you sort of have to do it for them.
No. Do it every day.
Typically, she is correct. Most companies do charge. Because the title companies that we use, they will not charge.
I've never not charged ever.
They will not charge you upfront and they can charge, you're right, if you put a fee in, you're supposed to pay a fee for the search. But most of the title companies in the area that we would be using waive that fee if the committee was back out.
I've, I've never had to pay for that ever. Honestly, I didn't even know. Until they waived it. Never been charged for something like that. Because I pull title on houses sometimes before I even list them, just to make sure, after talking to the owner of the house. You never know, because it could be a family thing where there's, you know, five brothers and sisters who are on the title and you don't really, you know, you don't really know until you pull the title. So, yeah, it's, anybody else? Any more questions? Any more edits? Any more? Because this is our time to review this.
I have a question on the survey because of the width of the driveway in there.
That will be done after we sign the purchase agreement, after we move forward on purchasing the property. We're going to have to have a survey done. We're going to have to have a survey done to see the definite boundaries where we're going to put our driveway and all that stuff.
And it was just a preliminary using the county's site, which is pretty accurate now that they use satellite.
Giving the survey.
Yeah, for their survey. It looks like there's a tree that's in between the house and the funeral home. That tree seems to be looking, just going to appear close up there. I think it's going to be a property line. But we'll have a surveyor come out and make sure.
That will be a cost. So I have a proposal here, because this, this started off obviously wrong. The process wasn't right. I, I agree now in hindsight. So it wasn't like anybody's trying to hide anything or do anything, but at moving forward at this point, Kurt asked me to be the point man on it. I'd rather turn it over to advisory. And you guys can, if you want, whatever inspections you want, whatever things you got, whoever's on advisory, you guys will be pretty much taking care of the due diligence and I have, whatever you want to do. So instead of yelling, ask me to do it because that's what I do for work, so.
I think this is one of those, should we, should we decide to, to sign this and we move forward with purchasing the property, I think we'll have advisory working on it. We'll also have DPW working on it, you know? Because there's going to be a lot of work there.
Yeah, I think we should work on it as a continental council.
Well, we'd have to have a lot of special meetings.
Advisory, advisory can look at it. Advisory can look at it. DPW can look at it. They can have their meetings, come together with their ideas, their thoughts, their suggestions, and then decide on it as the council. Because no committee can make a decision without going to council for it.
So, yeah, in hindsight, I didn't know really, I've never been on it by any of the law.
I really think somebody should be in charge of getting concrete prices instead of.
Well, that's what I said. For, for, for DPW, for looking at the inside and what we want to do, how we want to split the building up or whatever we want to do with it, they can go to advisory. Working with Donna and Amber, you know, and we can work on this separate committees and which way we want to go. That's if we decide that we want to sign this term.
I have one question. So this said seller requests seven days for attorney review. Does that mean they have seven days to make the decision or is that just their review period?
That was, that was my review period. And some of that language is put in by your attorney. He also has seven days for his attorney.
Okay. So I'm saying, so say we sign this, they have a week to tell us one way or the other. It's seven days.
They literally could take as long as they want to. They're under no obligation to respond immediately or any timeframe.
So they're requesting seven days, but they could take seven months if they want it.
Correct. Well, we're putting in there seven days trying to shorten it.
No, no, I understand. I'm just asking if there's a definitive timeline for them to tell us yes or no.
When, when, when somebody makes an offer on a property, the seller doesn't have to respond ever.
Okay.
We, we, that's why your attorney put they would respond by a certain date.
Right.
That would not put by the.
Our attorney's trying to. We can turn this and he can take an offer from somebody else that's offering more money and we may never hear from them.
Sure. I understand that. I'm just asking.
But that's why, that's why he had the date, the seller, the seller had to give us the answer by a certain date. He put those restrictions on. I didn't care. Because typically, what's going to happen is you put up the offer and, you know, you're going to have to make some decisions whether you do finance it or cash it. It doesn't really matter, but whatever you decide, when we finish this purchase agreement, we do have to like know which way to go along with cash or with the financing. And then for a due financing, we have to get to a lender to give you pre-qualification after they've loaned you the money. Once we take it to them, they'll typically get it to the attorney, get a review and try to get back to us within a week. A lot of times it'll be one day. Sometimes it could be four days. But we just wanted to put a timeframe so it doesn't drag on forever. They don't usually offer the shopping, other offers.
Donna, can the fight, can two committees meet together, like the finance and?
No, because then you would have a forum.
Donna, did you want to make a comment earlier?
I was just going to say, well, his first point, that doesn't even matter. But as far as the purchase agreement, I had nothing to do with that, sir. When you said I was part of making it up, I never had nothing to do. And I was told about the purchase agreement the same day I found out I told them that. So I wasn't advanced and as far as me saying I need a new place and I broke a purchase agreement, no, that's not true. I've been complaining for seven years. I didn't just come to the, I don't even know nothing about purchase agreements or who I would have got. So I just want clarification that I wasn't part of no, I didn't even go to the funeral home with them to look at it. I've been there before for funerals. I know how it looks. So I just want to clarify that, that no, I have no idea. The day I found out about this is the same day I told everybody else on this council.
That's it.
Any more comments, so? I want to see a motion.
So you, you three are advisory, right? So you're, so if, if we go through and we start a due diligence period, you guys are kind of going to head up the.
We'll try and make some kind of outline.
Make, make, you know, just figure out, you know, you could get, call up.
But we're not realtors and seviors or?
No, that's why you got to call those people and that's, that's what I want to make clear.
You guys should know who to call and.
There's certain things that are going to cost money, though.
Oh, yeah.
Most contractors are going to come out and give you a, I just want to make clear because we're discussing.
Yes, I know.
So.
Oh, we don't pay for quotes, so.
You don't pay for quotes, but you paid for, you paid for a survey, right?
So I, I will be glad to, to help you through the process. It's not going to be right up the leak. We'll help you through the process. And so I'll give you some suggestions that we've done on other commercial deals. So you'll want to get your quotes as quickly as possible. We'll set up a time with the surveyor so that he's out a little bit further. So that if you decide, oh, it goes too high, we haven't spent any money. Right, so I'll, I'll help you structure that and work with you. I don't have a problem.
How long does the survey process take?
Eight, two days, a week? Well, it's just getting the surveyor there.
Right.
We're really fortunate. I have a survey I use all the time, Capeback.
Okay.
It's like eight miles from here. I drive to you every day. And the state should be there because you're in the middle of the city. So I'm sure we could probably ask a favor of them to get it. We'll tell them, we need by this date, but no sooner than this day, so you have some time to get your quotes and make sure, make sure you're heading down the right path.
Sure.
Because if not, we might cancel before you get it.
Right, if quotes come in at 300,000, right, like, there's no reason to get a survey.
And a surveyor I use, he uses Tim Eddy. He owns Polaris. He's been doing a lot of stuff around here. He lives in Capeback.
Sure.
He's pretty good there. And you do a question for me, sir.
And that, did everybody get a chance to look at the seller's disclosure?
Yes.
This one here. Everybody looked at that?
Yep.
So that's basically what the seller knows about their property? So, yeah, so, so, yeah, the way the process, I guess, it just sort of, it went. I was asked to, I was asked to head it up, take care of it, and I'm sorry for not communicating with you guys.
No, you have the other.
Should have just went straight to the advisory.
Doesn't the seller pay for the?
Kevin, Kevin?
Thank you.
No. Any other comments? I don't fancy emotions. Who wants to make it?
I'll make a motion to have the mayor sign the purchase agreement with the changes that we made.
Support.
Schneider.
Yes.
Sofma. Weaver.
Yes.
Wilson, Anderson, Zimmer.
Yes.
Martyr.